Good evening and welcome to this special city commission meeting of the city of Boynton Beach. Today is Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, and the time is now 6:32 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's begin with the roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
President.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Turkin.
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
President.
Commissioner Kelly? Here. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, City Clerk. We're going to proceed now to the invocation by Pastor Lydia Maldonado of FWC World Outreach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, let's all stand for the invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. Father, we come to you as your people. We thank you because you are a mighty God. We realize that as a nation without you, we cannot govern. Father, as this meeting takes place tonight, I ask you, Holy Spirit, you take authority like you only know how. Take the word of everyone who is here tonight. Let them speak, Father God, with wisdom and understand them. I come against every hatred, bitterness, and resentment has to go in Jesus' name. And I ask you, Father God, take over this meeting. Use, Father God, the government in this city in order to bring peace to this city. This city needs God. Father, and we raise up Boynton Beach to you. And we ask you, Holy Spirit, come and reign in Boynton Beach. Take the bitterness, the resentment, the anger, everything that is not of you. Take it out of here. And as we have this meeting tonight, Father, bring peace. The peace of the Holy Spirit of God. Unity in God. Unity in the body. Unity as your children. Father, heal Boynton Beach. And we ask you that in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Saying, one nation, under God.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Maldonado, for those deep words.
It's a good question.
This is a special city commission meeting, but with all of our meetings, I just want to reiterate and read into the record our rules of decorum. First, Commissioners must first be addressed by the Chair and not interrupt the Speaker. Followed by public comments must be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to any individual or on the dais. Personal attacks of any kind are not prohibited. And also disruptive behavior from the audience are also prohibited. Should these rules be not followed, and after sufficient warning has been provided, you may be asked to leave these chambers. This is a special city commission meeting, and although the agenda approval is next, I'm going to ask for my colleagues not to add any items as we only have one item to focus on this evening. So may I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now going to move on to informational items by members of the city commission. And I'm going to ask my colleagues to make your comments on anything but the item. We will do that next. So is there any opening comments you'd like to make, Commissioner Kelly, on other items by the city? Let's go to Vice Mayor Cruz. Anything not pertaining to today's item?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hay?
No, nothing.
And Commissioner Turkin?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I just want to thank city staff, IT Department, for making this possible for me to attend this. I want to thank city staff again for handling a lot of concerns and being quick with response time. And anyone who's tried to reach out to me, I apologize. I am on orders, so thank you for being patient with me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Cruz?
I do have one question. I remember in prior meetings, we were able to see Commissioner Turkin back when he had COVID. I'm not sure if we need to have that, you know, on video or not. Just wondering.
Sorry, I have my video off.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Commissioner. All right, any other final comments from my colleagues? So we're now going to move on. I'm sorry, there's one more announcement. And I'd like to turn to our interim city manager, Mr. Jim Stables. Just prior to this meeting, he informed me of important news. And I'd like for him to share that news with my colleagues as well as to the public. Mr. Stables?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. So as you all know, I was, I was out of town last week visiting with family. And I have come to a conclusion that it is time for me to return to Tennessee. So I'm withdrawing from this process. And I am submitting my resignation in compliance with my contract with you all. So I will be here through September 30th to deliver the budget and the other important items that we, excuse me, that we are working on. I've been honored to serve. I've been honored to serve with such a great team here. I encourage you all to continue to recognize the talent that is on the floor, the professional staff, and treat them well. And thank you for the opportunity to serve. I feel blessed to have been here and honored to have served. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, you may. Commissioner, you may begin.
Yep. Chief, Chief Stables, thank you for your service. Thank you for everything. I've learned a lot from you. And so I just want to extend my deep gratitude for you stepping up to the plate and taking the interim position in a very transient time. You have extraordinary leadership skills, and they show with your department. Talking to a lot of firefighters, they really look up to you. And, you know, I think that's a, that's the true proof of a leader is what people say when they're not around. And so thank you again for everything you've done. And I'm sad to hear this. But again, I have learned a lot from you. And so I appreciate everything you've done. I know it has not been easy, and I know your family's away. That's the most important thing, you know, for you. And so I admire, I admire you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Hay?
I too would like to thank you for your short time of service. It's been outstanding. We've gotten along and discussed many items. And we always seem to be on the same page on certain key issues. I would like to say to you that I think, and I know that you made the right decision because I too am a family man. And when you have kids, especially grandkids, you don't get one bite at the apple. And that means that you, you, they're growing up without you. And you can't turn the clock back to those moments, watching your daughter play volleyball and, and all the other experiences that you will have as a family person. So thank you again for your service. I wish you the best of luck, and let's stay in contact.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
This was,
microphone.
This was a surprise. I just found out. And I do want to thank you so much for your service. Thank you for stepping up at a time of chaos. Thank you for throwing your name in the hat and for providing us stability during the time that you were here. I know you mentioned when we, when we did the interview that your daughter's turning 16 next week. And I felt that. And I said, you know, it's really important for you to be there with your family. You have an amazing character. You have a lot of beautiful qualities and a human being that I admire. And I want to thank you for everything you've done. I know it's been chaotic sometimes, and sometimes we've, you know, we've disagreed in certain things. But at the end of the day, I do want to thank you for your service and want to tell you that you're a phenomenal human being and that we appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly?
I follow the sentiments of my colleagues. I have, you jumped in and you've served our city well. And you, you committed your whole self and you hit the ground running to the point where until just a couple of days ago, I didn't even realize that you lived five states away from your, from your people. And that's something that, you know, is admirable, that you would stay here and support the city and support the staff to transition us to the next, to the next stage. And so I appreciate and I thank your, your willingness to serve the city and, and, and work with us. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
I want to echo the sentiments that's already been made. And Mr. Stables, I think ultimately, you and I know we've had that relationship. And we've had those long meetings into the evening. And I just want to tell you publicly that I appreciate you stepping up at a time when we needed a strong leader. And you provided stability. And it's not just stability. You left the place better off than where it was. And I can see that from our staff. Let's give them a round of applause. You have left this city in a much better place. And that's exactly all I hear when I speak to all the staff, whether they're firefighters or they're people working at City Hall. I know this is not easy for you. And obviously, family must come first. You made many sacrifices, and I can't tell you how grateful I am. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. We are indebted to you.
Thank you.
It's not easy to stand up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, you all recognize that it wasn't me. And, and the blessing that I had is I was surrounded by a strong team of professionals that carry that torch every day, day in, day out. So I've been blessed to be able to serve alongside some, some really great people who will remain here and continue to do the good work of the city. So thank you for recognizing me and them through me because they, they are the reason that this city is a desirable place. So thank you for that.
We're now going to move on to the primary item of this evening. And as you can see from the agenda, we are here to continue the discussion and get direction from my colleagues here on the city manager search. I'd like to begin by saying that it's always good to take a step back and see where we came from and what steps led up to this moment. As you recall, when we began this discussion of the search for a city manager, we began by having a discussion of should we go ahead and proceed with our HR to put a job posting, post it in all of the city manager networks and all of the various affiliate connections? Or proceed with an external executive search firm? And at that time, from what I recall from our discussion, was that we wanted to try it out first with our HR and see what we get. What kind of candidates will we get and evaluate from there? And if we weren't satisfied, then we can always proceed next to the executive search firm. From my understanding, it was a fiscal consideration as well. We didn't want to spend the money if we were sure that we absolutely needed to spend the money. So in that time, HR has begun that process. We've received a pool of candidates. We have made our own selections. We have found the common selections amongst the five of us. And at this point, we have interviewed and evaluated their backgrounds, right? And Commissioners, I assume you've interviewed everyone of the finalists at this point. And so what I need to ask my colleagues so we can get a sense of direction is, now that you've interviewed the finalists, now that you've reviewed their backgrounds, right? You're not just basing it off of a resume or an application, but you've had that one-on-one connection with the person. My question to you is, are you ready to move forward? We have several options. Move forward with the current three finalists. That's option one. Option two, if you are not satisfied for whatever reason, you can also continue to interview more people from the current pool. That's another option. And the third option is of course to use an executive search firm to look even greater. So that, I won't know which direction we take until we actually talk to each other. And so I just want to ask all of you, how would you like to proceed? What was your experiences like with your interviews? And that'll give us a sense of direction. So I don't know who would like to begin, but just let me know how you would like to move forward. Vice Mayor Cruz, I see we're ready to speak.
I had the opportunity to interview three candidates for this position. I just found out Mr. Stables is going to be leaving us and very sad to hear that. At the same time, I think we've, we've been going through this process for quite a while now. And we need stability in this city. We need a city manager. And I think this is the right time to do so. I've had the opportunity to interview the three candidates, and I feel comfortable with moving forward today at this meeting. And I also want to hear from my other colleagues as to what they think.
All right. Who else would like to go? IC Commissioner Hay, you're ready?
Yes, I am. I interviewed two of the three candidates. And I wasn't really satisfied with them. I have two points that I, I do want to make. First, first of all, over a month ago, I tried to get this commission to go with a professional headhunter company, as we call it, to take us through this process of selecting a new city manager. Because I knew that the politics would enter the picture just as they have. I was voted down four to one, but that's okay. And still, over a month ago, this commission decided to use our in-house human resource HR department to guide us through this process of selecting a new city manager. The HR department presented guidelines to us. They talked about the process to us. And everyone was in agreement to some extent. Everything was voted on and approved by this commission. We all, we all received the evaluations at the end of the process and given a list categorizing all of the candidates into four different categories. Those categories being highly qualified, qualified, minimally qualified, and not qualified. HR also stated that, and it was in writing, that due to the transparency in public hiring, those who are not qualified are not eligible to be considered unless the job description itself is revised and the position is reposted to reflect the revised requirement. So here's what I'm saying. On that list that we were all given, one of our candidates of the three was not qualified. Mr. Dan Duggar. So if we move ahead with this process, we must start over again. My second point is that once again, I've heard from the public, and I'm sure I'm going to hear more from the public tonight, this afternoon. And I'd just like to recall and refresh my colleagues, especially our Mayor Penzerga, that you stated that you wanted to hear from the public.
And we will today. That's why they're here.
And we will in a few minutes. And I want to hear those comments.
Absolutely, sir.
So with that, I'm going to refrain from additional comments until I get input from the public.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly or Commissioner Turkin?
Yes, I just want to say that there was some candidates. Unfortunately, one of them that I picked in my top five that was disqualified, yet had more experience than some of the qualified and highly qualified candidates. So to that logic, Commissioner Hay, I don't think that's completely accurate. And I'm also curious as to see why you didn't interview two, two of the three candidates and why you didn't interview all three of them.
Question?
Yes, you may respond.
What is not accurate you tell, you're saying to me?
There, there was a candidate who had experience as a city manager that was disqualified.
That is not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that among the three candidates that this commission decided to move ahead, one of them was not qualified. Based on the guidelines that we got from HR, we would have to modify our requirements and start over. That's what I said.
Commissioner, Commissioner, thank you. I think your point is made, and I understood your point. Let's move on. Commissioner Kelly?
I'm just, I'm going to reserve my comments until after we hear from the citizens.
All right. So I want to repeat my question to my colleagues because I need to know the direction of this body. As I've said to, I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say? Missing one, what?
If you want me to state my position, I will.
Please do.
My position is that we start this process over again with a professional headhunter agency. Start it over.
All right. I got that, sir. I heard the Vice Mayor's position. Commissioner Turkin, of the options I laid out, how would you like to proceed? Where is your position on this? Would you like to proceed as is with the current three? Would you like to move to a executive search firm? Or would you like to, for example, repost the job posting or any variation of that?
I would like to get public input first and then make that decision, if that's okay.
Absolutely, that's fine. I need the collective will of this body to be clear. Commissioner Kelly, I assume that's what you'd like to do as well? Wait? All right. So at this point, I would like to hear from the public. And if you have never been here before, please know. One, one second. Please know that each person will receive three minutes to speak. After we conclude with everybody in person, we will do the exact same thing online. Okay? Yes, Commissioner Hay?
Mayor, we gave our position. What's your position?
My position here is that I would like to explore a possible search firm. Okay? But I also understand what, what my colleagues are saying and you. Let's hear from the public first. Okay? So what I'd like to do is again, if you would like to speak, you can approach the podium. We have two podiums left and right. You will have 30 seconds. One second. All right. Please state your name for the record and begin when you are ready. We'll go with, on the left.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission, Mayor. My name is Vinnie Gray.
I'm sorry. Can you please check the microphone is on? Is it on?
Testing one, two.
There we go.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Vinnie Gray. I've been a resident of the city of Boynton Beach for nearly 40 years. I've seen many trials and tribulations throughout the city over the past several decades. And I still love living here. I really do. But I have some great concerns on what is going on right now within our city government. Soon, the city commission will sign on the future with selecting a new city manager. And as I stand here tonight with great hopes that the proper selection is made, you all need to look outside of the box for a new way of thinking for your selection. Historically, city commissions seem to select former city manager candidates from other cities who come with hidden baggage, bad habits, or a lack of knowledge of what the town really needs or what issues need to be seriously addressed here. There are now two candidates remaining who applied for this position. An outsider city manager from Broward County. I don't know much about him. And a police captain who currently works for the Boynton Beach Police Department for almost 20 years and resides here in our town. I could, I could tell you this, folks. Nobody knows the health, current issues, and problems of our city better than our police officers who directly serve in this community. They go to the calls. They read the crime reports. They look at the statistics, listen to the community concerns, and give the officers live updates of what's occurring and definitely knows what's going on within the boundaries of our city day in and day night. Think about it. A veteran police officer who works with the community, who can lead us in the right direction right now, not later after trying to learn the city and its problems, but he will have ideas and solutions to grab the bull by the horns and beginning solving problems right now without wasting any time. With these facts in mind, what a better selection you can make by utilizing Captain Daniel Duggar's institutional knowledge, training, experience for this important role for the city. You have already heavily invested in Mr. Duggar. His education, his training, couple of being familiar with our city government, the strengths and weaknesses of the city and City Hall, and an ambition and desire with making this city great again. Please seriously consider selecting Danny Duggar as a next city commission for this city. We need a local leader who knows this town. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. All right, we're going to move on to the next speaker on the right podium here. Please begin when you're ready and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Steve Burdelski, B-U-R-D-E-L-S-K-I. I'm here to support Dan Duggar. I've known Dan for about five years. And I know there's concern, can a, can a law enforcement officer fill this position? We see that it works here in Palm Beach County. We've seen it work. Where Assistant City Manager Steve Stepp has served in a Assistant City Manager position in Palm Beach Gardens. And we also see it now with Chief Kitzro, the former chief of police for Jupiter, serving in that position. So I know there's concerns about that. But I clearly believe that these two city managers or assistant city managers have shown that law enforcement officers have the knowledge, skills, and ability to handle such a job. Dan has great commitment, common sense. He's very pragmatic. He's patient. And most importantly, he's a good listener. If you're going to be a leader, you have to have good listening skills. If you don't have good listening skills, you will never succeed. And Dan has those skills. As stated by the prior Vinnie Gray, he's a resident of the city. He's committed to the city. He lives in the city. His children go to school in the city. He understands the city. He's a strong family man. And Dan has strong resolve. He's been through a lot through this process. He's had people throw mud at him. But he's standing firm. And he's prepared to move forward. And he's prepared to move the city forward. Dan knows he doesn't know everything. He knows that. But he will surround himself with those people that do. And he will take advice from them, and he will make a practical, logical decision. So therefore, I would request that the city commission move forward with Dan Duggar as the city manager.
All right. Moving on to the next speaker, Mr. Garcia. Begin when you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
How y'all doing? First of all, my name is Sonny Garcia. I reside at 1631 North West Third Lane in Boynton Beach. I'm here to support Dan Duggar also. I want to congratulate Chief Joe DeJulio on becoming chief of police force. He's a supporter
Mr. Garcia?
Program.
Could you please move the mic, please? Thank you.
He's a supporter of the Community Palace program. And I think he wants to bring the Palace program back, which is a good thing because before it used to keep a lot of kids out of the streets and get them involved in programs. I want to also, Captain I want to also, Captain Dugan is applying for the city manager job. I want to support him because I think he's a man that will listen to the community, will listen to the problems of the community, will be out there probably doing what other people don't do is get involved in the community. And I believe that he would make a good person to become city manager. And in my book, I think he qualifies. I don't know how you think, but at the same time, I figure that he's a man that you can call and he will give you an honest answer. I believe that the man will listen to you when you talk to him. And I believe if you put a call to the man, he will respond and you won't have to call him four or five times like I have called some people at the city that don't respond. And people that tell me when I got a problem that I have to call the police department when they represent us as commissioners in our community. So by all means, I think that the city should go forward and elect Dan as city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next speaker on the right, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, hello, my name is Donald Tarka. I live in Gulfy Harbor and I've lived in Boynton Beach for over 46 years. My first job was at the Seamus Marina and I was also an employee in Motorola. I plan on living here a long time. My mom and my fiance's parents also live in Boynton Beach and I want Boynton to be a safe place and one I'm proud of and I'm here to help do that. As an engineer that designs parts for satellites, I am used to looking at large, complex problems. One of the largest things we do is to find out what has worked and what needs to be redone. The more that we can reuse, the better off we are. So let's choose some common sense. If you want to bring somebody in from out, out of the city, how much time are we gonna spend him just even learning the streets? Dan has spent 18 years driving around these streets, day, night, storms, all times a day. Who's gonna, every time somebody goes to his, to city manager, they're gonna play, I have a problem here, I have a there. You bring somebody in from outside, oh, I gotta go find out where it was. What does it look like? Like this, he's, Dan will go, yeah, I know that street. You got this house, this house and this house on it. So as city commissioners, you need to get things done. Would you rather have somebody you could go talk to that you don't have to spend two hours explaining the problem because he already knows the problem? And we got, streets are flooding. He can probably tell you which ones flood. He knows which residents are a problem, which ones are not problems. I mean, the amount of time, it puts, it puts him five years ahead of anybody else that walks into the door. Just, just for his knowledge. Also, hiring for men. It's sad that everybody just wants to jump from job to job to job to job nowadays. Nobody has careers anymore. It's nice to see somebody has a career. Also, as a city, you want to hire employees and you want employees to see that they can start at the bottom and work their way up to the top. It gives them motivation. It makes them work harder, makes them feel like they have a goal. So remember that and just think about, think of all the projects you want to go, you want to do and say, if I got Dan, how much easier for me is it to get it done? He already knows all the police, all the firemen and residents. And remember, you want a city manager who is for the city. Who has talked to more residents than he has in 18 years? How many residents has he talked to in good and in bad? How many people that have businesses here know him already? He already knows everybody. You want somebody that knows the city? He's already talked to most of, he's talked to more residents than any of us probably all put together in his 18 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is John Sohatsky and I want to move just a little bit different than everybody has said. I'm not gonna repeat that. You were elected by the residents of this community to run this city the best you can and you're doing a good job, but you need somebody who does the grunt work and you need somebody who can follow orders and take orders. You have a man who has spent his life here in the military. Now, I know it's the police department, but it effectively is a military. Patrolman, sergeant, captain, et cetera. I would recommend you consider that strongly. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hi, good evening, thank you so much. My name's Deborah Balta. Dan Dugger is an 18-year civil servant serving the city of Boynton Beach. He sees the big picture as it pertains to the needs of our diverse community. He works here, lives here with his wife and family and knows the people of the city of Boynton Beach. As a city councillor, he will be able to act and provide for the unique and changing needs of our growing city. Dan is accessible. It's as easy as picking up the phone or inviting him to your house for a neighborhood round table. In city government, the taxpayer requires accessibility. While city meetings give us the taxpayers the opportunity to be engaged with ongoing issues within the city, building and having relationships that are lasting is what makes for effective government that is accountable and transparent. Dan brings to this, to this, to the table as a public servant. He has worked within the community on a day-to-day basis and has seen what the needs of the community are. When working for a profitable corporation, the culture always comes from the top down and ultimately determines outcomes, which are for the greater good from which everyone ultimately benefits. Dan has shown that with his tenure and experience that he has the integrity, intelligence and the wherewithal for the task of the next city councillor for the city of Boynton Beach. Thanks.
Thank you. Please begin, sir.
Good evening, Reverend Richard Dames, Field Box 990, Boynton Beach, Florida. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the dais. I'm Richard Dames, Senior Pastor of Hopewell Missionary Baptist Church in Boynton Beach, President of the Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy. And tonight I stand before you as a voice crying out to inform you that clergy and community alike are asking you to seek and hire a professional organization who is qualified to identify candidates with the necessary qualifications to lead this city, our city, into the future. The city of Boynton Beach has made news over the last eight months. News that has been nothing but negative news and news that has brought about a dog cloud over our city that still remains to this day. The position of city manager is a position where one must not only be ready to lead, but be qualified to lead his employees along with his residents into an era where all is treated as they would like to be treated. We need and deserve a city manager who is creative, savvy and has the potential and credentials to move this city into a new and positive era. Not one of you will hire an inexperienced and unqualified individual to run your own million-dollar business. And so what gives you the right to hire someone who is inexperienced and unqualified to run a people's business? I, along with many other residents, believe that the best way to serve the people is to listen to the people who elected you to serve the people and not serve yourself initiatives. Mr. Mayor and City Commissions, on numerous occasions, the residents have came and stood before you and allowed their voices to be heard as well as tonight. Standing in solidarity and speaking with one voice, crying out to say, let's hire an outside company to bring in qualified candidates and if Mr. Dugger is one of them, then so be it. You might be able to get on with the people business by bringing in an outside company. We have no personal vendettas against any of these finalists except the fact that not one is the best candidate to lead this city. Why wouldn't we want the very best candidate to lead our city as we want the best for our families? We want the best for our children. We want the best for our schools. So why shouldn't we want the best candidate to lead this city into the future? Just because I park a bicycle in a garage doesn't make it a car. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next speaker. Please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Joe Joesman, I'm sorry, Josie Joesman. March 20th, 1990, Bethesda Memorial Hospital. I'm actually born here in Bethesda. Thank you. I heard about you a lot when I was a kid. I didn't grow up on the rich side. My mom lived in Seacrest, then she said, okay, I'm gonna divorce your dad, I'm moving out west Boynton. Divorced my dad, my dad moved Seacrest, my mom moved to Boynton out west. There's a couple guys here that know me that actually made me into the man that I am today. Andrew helped me achieve goals that I never thought I could achieve. What I mean that is those men over there, they might, they might not be here for the same candidate I am, but I respect it. But they taught me how to be a man. They taught me how to go to school, get your master's degree, get your bachelor's degree because in life, they're not gonna give you anything. You guys say about qualification. I applied for a solid waste manager job twice with a master's degree, didn't get it. Someone with a bachelor's degree got it. I wish you would have stand up for me. So when people like us that grew up in the city, that came from poverty, we need someone that understands the city, that knows the pain of the city, that actually knows when someone's working two jobs to help them out, not to push them down. Because I said I want to run for commissioner, some people have been getting laid off. I had to resign because I actually understand government. I knew what was coming. How do I know what was coming? Those guys there, they taught me. They're not here for me again, but they're the ones that helped me be the man that I am. At first I was nervous coming up here, but they actually gave me support. Again, it's cool. I want to say, I want Dan to be the city manager and the reason I want Dan to be the city manager is because he's been here for 17 years. Andrew is a great Assistant City Manager. Catherine. Great with finance. She taught me a lot that she didn't even know that she was teaching me. Andrew taught me a lot. But along the way, people forgot how to grow in a company. Now, Public Works doesn't look the same. So I want Dan to actually think about Public Works. Public Works is the nucleus of the city. Your trash need to be picked up. Dan knows about that. His trash gotta get picked up too. I'd rather we keep the money here instead of bringing it out. Dan doesn't fit you guys, well, hold him accountable. Come in here and hold him accountable. Don't wait until somebody is about to get a job, then you want to talk. Come up here, hold these people accountable. You said you want an outside source. Why do we have an HR director? If we paid her $50,000 a year, you're right. But if I'm paying you over 80, 90,000, I want you to do some work. They wanted me to do work, but again, I want Dan. Thank you very much.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, next speaker?
My name is Marcella Masters. I love Boynton Beach. I would not suggest that you go outside of our city looking for somebody you don't even know. Mr. Don has been here. He has given his life for us. The policeman's work is life at stake every day. So it seems ridiculous, excuse the language, to go outside when we have their best. So that's my take.
All right.
Hi, my name's Jacqueline Boust. I live in Boynton Beach for 22 years.
I'm sorry, one second, I'm gonna reset your time. If everybody could please quiet down, I'd like to hear the speaker. Please begin.
Thank you. My name's Jacqueline Boust. I lived in Boynton Beach for 22 years. I raised my children here and I've met Dan many times over the years. He's put in a lot of hard work to be in this town and raise this family here and I believe that he should keep his tax dollars, you should keep his tax dollars here in our, in our town instead of hiring someone from outside. I don't see why you would take our tax dollars that we pay to go to an outside source when you have such a wonderful person who has worked so hard in our town for 12 years. I think you should hire him and I do not believe that you should take $1 to go outside of our town when you have Dan Dugger in here. Thank you.
Next speaker? We have two podiums, we can alternate.
Good evening, my name's Lazarus Kimsel. I want to reiterate the comments of some of the previous speakers. A longtime city employee, particularly in law enforcement, who's elevated through the ranks, a longtime city resident, I think would be a great addition to this city. You know, the gentleman a little bit ago commented that the mayor and the city council, your job is to lead and I believe that you need a diverse group and there's nothing better than real-life experience, not that none of you have it, but real-life experience through law enforcement, through dealing with the public, through the ups and downs, seeing the downside, let's say, of the city firsthand. Also seeing the benefits and reward of the city firsthand. That young man right there is using as an example, who came up. So I think Dan is a great choice for those reasons and like was just touched on as well. The accountability is there and the citizens have the accountability and so does the city government. So I think he's the best choice for all those reasons. Thank you.
If you intend to speak, maybe we can form two lines so we know that who's gonna be speaking next. All right, sir, please begin.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and Women, Professionals that run the city. I started to work in the city of.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, did you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Stanley Howard Cale, Senior Chief, Senior. Got a little joke there, some people know it and some don't. I started to work in the city in 1974 in the police department, so I'm prejudiced. Am I for Dan? Yes, I am. But what I'm not for is for this city to spend money going outside. I worked in this city. I worked in this city for 27 years and then went to work for Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office for 13 years and now I'm finally retired and out of it. I moved into the city in 1976 and I am still a resident of the city. And I like Dan an awful lot. I've met him, I've talked to him. I am prejudiced, so I'm not gonna beat that drum. What I'm talking about is in the time that we are at right now and with the economy and the shape it's in, and I have seen over 27 years of city council saying, oh, let's go out, find somebody from outside and bring them in and change our city. Nine out of 10 times, it failed. And I've seen a lot of city managers and a lot of different chiefs of police and fire brought into this city and it's failed. I think you need to reconsider, look within and I'm supporting Dan wholeheartedly. I think he's a great person.
Good evening, please begin when you're ready.
Good evening, my name is David Ban Camp. I live in the city here in Boynton Beach. I moved my family down here from West Palm Beach back in 2005, right before Hurricane Wilma came through and redecorated everything here. Those of you who lived here at the time remember. And like a lot of the people here today, I am here to support Dan. I won't call him Mr. Dugger because I know him too well. He happens to be my neighbor. And the reason I'm up here is, I guess for a couple reasons. If you honestly, truly believe you can find a better candidate outside the city, then you should spend the money to do that, but I think you're wrong. I don't think you will find a better candidate for this. I know Dan personally, I, I'm sorry, Dan. I see Dan every night walking up and down my street without a shirt on, talking on his cellphone. Every single night, he works non-stop. All I hear him talking about is the city. All I hear him talking about it is job, his neighborhood, his city. That's all he does, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. He walks up and down my street without a shirt on. So this is very selfish of me. I want him to get the job because I'm thinking maybe if he's got city manager title, he'll put a shirt on. I don't know that it will happen. I don't know that it will happen. I don't know that it'll happen, but I do believe that Dan is the right man for this job. And with all due respect for the commissioner who doesn't feel that he is qualified, I believe he's terribly qualified for the job. I think he's overqualified for the job. He served this city for a long, long time, respectfully and dignified. He's, he's, he's a good man. He knows the city better than probably any of us here, even those of us who have lived here for a long, long time. And so I am here to support Dan Dugger, and I hope you do, too.
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Emily Ash. I'm from Leisureville. And I will be picking probably the minority position here. I would like to say that I have spoken to Dan. He is an excellent person. He has very good speaking skills, and he spoke very well about the police force and the city and his ideas. Where I question is, the city is facing some interesting challenges. You spoke recently, mayor, to the Leisureville people at a town hall. You spoke about the fact that we did not have enough office space to be able to grow business-wise, to increase our average income, that we have the city that has to be completed, the downtown, some of the complexities with the property that was misappropriated and getting that corrected, getting the, the parking garages built, getting our sewer system organized, keeping us a green city. It's so much more than the police department. It is so much more than the fire department. It has a lot more in the city. And so if you think he's qualified for all of that, coming in and being able to hit the ground running, then fine. But I agree with you, I think you should look outside. Thank you.
All right, next speaker, Mr. Hartman.
Hi, good evening, commission. My name is Gregory Hartman, 1083 Southwest 25th Place. You know, my educational background isn't a four-year degree, and a lot of people, it's not. You know, meritocracy is kind of how our society works, and the cream does rise to the crop. So sometimes you may have a candidate who is extremely qualified, but lacks the paper credentials that may open a door for them. But nothing can beat, you know, OJT, on-the-job training. That's what everyone needs. And I think that's a precursor to success. You can't always have a large resume and an equal success. We see that all over the business field. Some of the most successful people are not, you know, they don't have a four-year degree even, you know, much less a master's or a doctorate. I think the guy we need for the city is Dan Dugger. I think Dan has a practical mind. I think Dan puts the two most important things for Boynton Beach first, which is business and safety. And those two go hand in hand. People don't want to do business in the city where they don't feel safe, and people don't want to live in a city where they don't feel safe. So it's kind of a self-fulfilling cycle. We need to, A, make the city safer, B, that will hopefully bring in new business. I believe Dan is the right one for that. He's shown the leadership, he's served our country on the military service. He's served our city for a long time, and as others have said, I don't know what the average salary is in Boynton Beach, maybe I should, but I certainly believe it's not city manager high. So to imagine I'm gonna send that tax base back to Coral Springs or a different county kills me when the average person in Boynton Beach probably makes, you know, one-fifth of what a city manager does. So from that alone, like, they go to Banana Boat way more than your average resident does. So I want to keep that tax money coming into Boynton Beach. And just to sum it all up, I think Dan has the qualifications our city needs at the current time. And while it may not be the paper qualifications we're typically used to seeing, his time in the field is irreplaceable, and you can never make that up unless you go spend 20 years in Boynton Beach like he has. Thank you, commission.
Good afternoon. My name is Evangeline Ward. And I love the fact that the residents got up. I've been here 20 years, two years, four years. I bought my family here. This is 71 years of Boynton. Okay? And when you were talking about Boynton Beach, Boynton has four districts. Okay? And out of all my lifetime I've been here, I never knew a Dan until yesterday. This street, too, doesn't know a Dan. I can imagine walking down the streets, shirt off, whatever the case may be. But in my district, more than likely, they would have gotten him put in decent exposure. Okay? So in the midst of everything, qualifications are required. And that's why they have you do resumes. And I've been in for many jobs, many jobs. And then the city of Boynton, like the young man said, he had a master's. But so my thing, I could put my hat in for the city manager. Because I got 38 years of banking, finance is up the wazoo, but then it goes back to qualifications. So if you're gonna begin this because he's my friend, he's my ace boon coon, I know him. And see, there's a difference in policing and finances to run a city. You have to be well-rounded, and you just can't know one city, part of the city. You've got to know every square mile of Boynton Beach and willing to come in there. So when you know that, then I can see that you got a heart for me. You got a heart for me, and not just for those that live in a certain district. Now, I saw him, I met him, I talked to him. He's a good man. He's a smooth talker. But you need somebody that, and this one thing, when I asked him, who will train you? He mentioned a young man named Andrew. So if Andrew gonna train Mr. Dugger, get a job to Andrew. God bless.
All right, next speaker.
My name is Mike Brunson. I've been a resident for 12 years. Sorry, can't compare to the last.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brunson, one moment until everybody quiets down. All right, Mr. Brunson, please begin.
Thank you. Experience, it's, can be looked at in many forms. We recently had a police chief. He left. The morale instantly, instantly has changed within the police department. Because it was within, because you took your people from within. What do you think may happen to your other agencies or other departments within this town? Because they have someone that has had their back for how many years? Maybe the morale will improve there, and you will get better productivity from everybody. That's what we want. We want our city protected, and we want the day-to-day activities addressed. All right? The, just the morale, it's a big thing. Police officers make split-second decisions all the time. All right, they may not have experience at all these things, but they make a decision, and nine times out of 10, it's the best one. You only hear about the ones that go foul, not the day-to-day activities that are great. And Dan Dagger is the candidate. I have 37 years in law enforcement. Maybe I am prejudiced. However, I can make, I can look at someone and make an assessment of them and know what's good. I believe Dan is good for this city. Thank you for the time.
Hi. My name is Jim Sizik. I live at Southwest 15th Street in Leisureville. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the task to me is clear. You may, you must evaluate and select the city manager candidate that will best be able to balance the scale of services that we have here in our community efficiently for all 80,000 residents plus across four districts. I expect you to do that. You will not, you will not hear from all of those 80,000. Matter of fact, you're probably gonna hear from people that are not even residents of this community. But you're gonna hear, and you're gonna be expected to act. My, my concern is that the responsibility falls on you to make the right decision. We as residents demand a fully-staffed Boynton Beach Fire Department and Rescue Team. We demand a fully-staffed police department, properly-staffed and efficient departments for public works, utilities, recreation, building authority, library, arts, all the other tertiary support things that we deserve to have in this community. And that responsibility is yours. But rectifying the shortfalls of this, the inconsistencies in the city, does not necessarily get satisfied by somebody willing to take the job as city manager. It comes from someone that is passionately invested, desperately wants to embrace the job, not just somebody willing to take on the role and the responsibility. Recent history is proving that hiring from outside falls us far short from instilling in city management the sense of commitment, oversight, and community that fosters trust and teamwork. You're hearing it tonight. People have no trust, and they're speaking out, they're being disruptive. That's because they don't have faith. We need to put a person in place here that has the whole city in mind. Give us someone who gives us cause to rally behind, to join with so that we will make things better for all of us. Bring us a city manager that the municipal staffs can identify with in order to share and be motivated to better perform their tasks. Bring us somebody that is respected, not necessarily somebody that's an autocrat and is somebody to be feared, which may be something that had perpetuated in the past. By coming regularly to city commission meetings, I've realized through thoughtful and responsible leadership, we.
Please wrap up.
I would ask that you consider Daniel Dugger as our city manager.
Next speaker, begin when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Rod Durellis. I want to start off by saying that I am a Navy veteran. I'm starting with that because I know that Mr. Dan Dugger is also a veteran. I want to mention that being a veteran comes with a lot of responsibilities, and serving your nation overseas, like Dan has, brings a lot of value that I think you guys should take into account. But not only there, I think Dan also went on, now I think, I know he went on to serve 18 years here locally and put in time and resources and invested so much in this community. I want to say that I think this committee should look within, look within your own city. Look within yourself, because this city of Boynton Beach is beautiful. Despite the ups and downs, I think the city is beautiful. I think we should have, we must look within. And like some others already stated, spirit, morale, trust is important when it comes to community building. And Dan, I know very well, is someone who has the love and trust of his community, not just in one district, but in all of them. I know that Dan himself has gone out his way to, to ensure that the, his neighbors are taken care of, and that he's gonna be the one that's gonna be accountable as a city manager at the end of the day, because he has to lay his head here. So I encourage you not to just make that decision to go look outside, but look within. I'm sure that there's qualified individuals here in Boynton Beach. I think we need to work a bit harder. Dan Dugger, in my opinion, should be strongly considered. I think you should have a little bit more faith in your police, your firefighters, your first responders, because public safety is on the top of the mind of a lot of the residents here. And not only that, a well-managed government is something that we all deserve. And I think Dan Dugger has the heart of the city, and I think you should strongly, again, strongly, please consider Dan Dugger for a city manager. Again, we have to have faith and trust in your own citizens, because we are beautiful. You are doing a great job, but please consider Dan Dugger for city manager. Thank you.
This is Bernard Wright, current candidate for Commissioner District 2, former candidate for Commissioner and Mayor, CEO of Bernard Wright Ministry, Real Talk Marketing and Consulting, Real Talk Radio, board member of the Historic Resource Preservation Board and Student Council at Ponciano. My great-grandfather built the first street, first church, and first school here. Do I have legacy? I'm 70 years old. Yes, I do. I stand here as a man with a coat of many colors, as a parent, as a husband. And right now, definitely as a resident of this city, probably haven't lived longer than most of this in this audience that I've seen in 12 years of my advocacy here in Boynton, trying to see change for the better for the people. If anyone knows what's going on in Boynton, I do. I've never heard of Duggar until then, but I know some people over, over my side that knows of him from the police department. You know, when we think about this and this police department having the corruption it has with the blood on its hands, he was a supervisor of Mark Song, and that still is not over with an appeal as city manager. He will be reviewing that. Not only that, but there's no doubt about that. What I see now is Ku Klux Klan. What I see is white supremacists. What I see is systemic racism.
Second.
Tell you like it is, a deck stacked.
Everybody, everybody stop.
On my Facebook is Trump.
Mr. Wright, Mr. Wright, one second, one second.
I have a fear of speech. Now, they're wrong.
We will, one second.
Thank you.
One second, everybody. Do not call anyone the KKK. We, that is a personal attack. You can state your disagreement, but you don't need to be calling anybody the KKK.
And I'm gonna say this, and I don't resent it, and I don't, and I won't change my mind.
We're gonna let him have 30 more seconds to finish his time.
What I'm seeing right here is the deck stacked. We are disenfranchised people in District 2. The police department controls this city. As a city manager, you understand what we will have here, mass incarceration being supported from the severance. What we will have here is not only disenfranchisement, but as we've been dishonored and given a disservice from you and your new administration having broken the sunshine law many a times, till God be the glory, by taking the city manager's office, having employees to do things you have no right to give them an order to do. Man, this whole thing, man, is a deck stacked, and as a professional governor, we need to reshuffle. And reshuffling, and let's spend the money to get what's right, what's right for this city. Let's get a headhunter. Let's pay the money for an executive agency to get the best qualified HR, y'all used them, and HR said it was not qualified.
All right, sir, 10 more seconds.
HR said it wasn't qualified. And if you're gonna buy it by HR to this point, then he's not qualified. So you're not gonna buy it by HR. We need to reshuffle this deck.
All right, thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. I reset the clock. All right, thank you.
I didn't hear you. What you saying?
I reset the clock. Your time has expired. Thank you. Yes.
Well, I didn't see you reset it, but to God be the glory.
Thank you.
You got the seals outside.
We will move on to the next speaker. We want to respect everyone's time, so let's make sure we move in an orderly fashion. Good evening, and please begin when you're ready. Sir. All right. Officers, please escort him out.
That's enough.
That's enough. That's absolutely enough. Officers, you are directed to not let the gentleman back in again. All right, let's respect this individual here. Please begin when you're ready. I'm gonna begin the timer now.
Can I just let somebody come up and come back, please?
Sure, that's fine with me. Take, take a moment. All right, next speaker. We have two podiums. We'll take turns.
Good evening, everybody. Board members, commissioners, and mayor. My name is Bill Tome, 25-year law enforcement, retired from the city of Boynton Beach. I have 38 years' experience for different departments, and the best department I ever worked for is this city. When I first started, I was lucky enough to be assigned to the Eze Alhester Park with the understanding is I was supposed to go out there and create programs with no guidelines, involve kids, keep them off the street, out of trouble, involve them positive programs. So again, I had no experience. Okay, so what did I do? I went straight to the community. Like you see, some of my coaches are back there, and I got to know the kids and the coaches, and I asked them what they wanted to do. They wanted to play ball, they wanted a football program, so they didn't have to go to Delray. So what did we do? We started the Boynton Beach Bulldogs. I raised $25,000, and we have sent, sent 25,000. We started the Boynton Beach Bulldogs, I raised $25,000, and we have sent 25 kids to the NFL, and all kinds of educated jobs for these kids. And so with that, I'm looking at Dan Dugger, okay, so yeah, you should be skeptic, you know, who is this guy, some of you don't know him, he came up through the ranks, and that's normal, but that's how I started, okay? And then you're looking at Chief Joe DiGiulio, Matt Zella, who just came up through the ranks, they were with me for about 10 years with the power program, always supported me, and with them and Dan Dugger, you got something like an A-team right here, you don't have to go outside, okay? They're going to go straight to the community, because I know these guys, and they're going to talk to you guys, they're going to want to hear from you guys, what can we do to make this city better, because I tell you right now, it's all about community policing. We got to start with these kids when they're five years old, we got to keep the Bulldogs going out there, okay? But we have to work together, you guys supported me when I first started, it came down for the city commissioners, down to all the chiefs, everybody was in, was behind me with the police athletic, and that's why it worked. We can't be fighting against each other, guys, and I tell you right now, don't call me prejudiced, oh no, because you know me, my mother thinks I'm half-black, okay? Because that's what I worked, I grew up in New York City, I didn't see color, my best friends were black, so I don't want to hear that. And I came down here, adopted to the Del Rey Beach Police Department, the Boynton Beach Police Department, New York City Police Department, and the Pontius County School District, okay? The bottom line is, guys, you have a golden opportunity, don't go outside, let's all work together, let's go knock on the doors, you tell the police department what you want done. If that's not satisfying, then we'll do something else. But we're willing to give these programs back, I'm willing to come back as a consultant, start the PAL again, and keep those Bulldogs playing out there, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Tolliver. I don't know who Doug or Dan is, but I basically was looking at the qualifications for a city manager, and if we're going to have a city manager, it really should be based on qualifications and not personal situations and not, because there's a difference between being a police officer and a city manager. The city manager has two, has dual roles, they are to act as a public administrator and CEO of local government, that means the best candidate should have the skill and experience in directing the city's bureaucracy to help the city make sound decisions. In addition, a qualified city manager must be a skilled public, public administrator to execute decisions and policies put forth by the council. The other thing for a city manager, that most municipalities hire city managers with a bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration, or related field. Candidates who earn a Master of Public Administration or hold a public manager certification are even more attractive to city executives charged with making a hiring decision. Employers generally require a minimum of five years of municipal government experience, the most qualified city manager also have backgrounds in, as an assistant city manager or a department leader, and there are a list of other qualifications concerning a city manager, so if Mr. Dan qualifies based on HR qualification, then so be it, but if not, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Hay that it should be lifted out from outside, that someone who actually has the qualification that can run a city, who is one who would be able to make decisions, wise decisions, based on the finances, because he has, or she has to know what the budget is and stay within those guidelines, or anyone who would, just because I'm a friend of, of Commissioner Hay, to think that he qualifies, that is beyond what we are talking about, we're talking about the practicality and the best for the city of Boynton Beach.
All right, next speaker on the other podium.
Hello, everyone, my name is Pamela Cotan, and I live in Leisureville, and I've lived here for about eight years. I really like this city, I think it has a lot of potential, and I really support what the last speaker was saying. While I hear a lot of you talking about Chief Dan, and I had the opportunity to hear him recently, and it sounds like he is a terrific person for the police department, and has really done well with that, and very admirable, and I would hate to see him leave that, where he has so many skills and so much to give the community, and so much leadership in that area. For the city managers department, I come from a world where you had to meet certain qualifications to get a job. And I think city managers across the country, my experience is, you had to have an education to back up those qualifications. Not to say you don't look beyond that, I think you have to really know the person, interview the person, but I really think that our city, we're a large city, we are a very large city here, and I know that we all want to grow, we want the best for our city, and I think we need a leader, we need somebody who is skilled, who comes with credentials, but also somebody that you as the commissioners get to know, interview, and decide, gee, would this person fit in, would he listen to Chief Dan, would he listen to other people and all their experience and their knowledge, and bring that in with, and combine those skills with what a city manager would provide us? And I think we, we need to realize we're an important part of this county, and we need good leadership, and not to say that Dan isn't a good leader, but I think he's a good leader where he is, and I'd hate to see the police department be without him, because he sounds like he's very admired, he works with his men and women, so that's, that's what I have to share in my opinion. So I really encourage you to go outside and find somebody who's qualified, who meets your qualifications as they're written now, so if that means spending some money, it'll
All right, thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Lydia Maldonado, and I've been in Boynton for 24 years. As I'm sitting there, I usually watch your meetings through the TBO YouTube, whatever you want to call it. As a minority Hispanic female, I felt very offensive of two things that has been said by one of the commissioners today, and is that education, I am someone who graduated with a master's degree, special education with dyslexia, who cannot even spell to this day, but I know I can hold a job, and I can also be a commissioner, okay? All of you here probably don't even qualify to be where you're sitting down, you're there because people elected you. And we have to understand that I don't know Dan, I don't even know who he is, so I'm not here for Dan or whatever, all I'm saying is, we need wisdom and understanding, we are not going to fight this in Boynton Beach with all these races and all these comments that we're making, we need to learn to respect each other, we need to come and realize, these people here didn't put themselves there, they were elected by a lot of you. So when you come here and you make comments, the way that they come in, they sit here and they take that from you, listen, I take that personally, because I ran for state representative, okay? I know what it's like to run a race, and I know what it's like to take nonsense from people. We need people with common sense, instead of fighting and screaming the way we're doing, and calling each other, saying, why don't you get on your knees and pray? And that's got to forgive all of us, so he can heal our land and he can heal Boynton Beach.
Ma'am.
Being prejudiced is not the key.
Ma'am, the speakers.
And I'm sorry, I am really sorry, but this really gets to me, because when I hear this, it's like, man, I don't even qualify for this job, and I could apply for it, okay? And here, do we have the money to go out and hire someone to come and go through the screening of a job, who's probably going to take thousands of dollars that Boynton probably don't have, when you can check what you got here and work with what you have? And if the man doesn't come to the table like we want him to, then you know what, get rid of him and hire somebody else? So it's using common sense, common sense, and please, this race card needs to stop, politics needs to stop, this is not about the donkey, this is not about the elephant, this is about the lamp of Jesus Christ, and if you call yourself a Christian and come here and say the things that you say, you need to go back to the altar, thank you very
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening, everyone, Glory goes with 327 Boynton Bay Circle. I'm here because last night, I worked late, because I want to serve the people that are working, so I work late, my hours are late. I am a social worker case manager by profession, so I leave myself open various hours sometimes, I'm at work till 10, 11, me and my boss, the Boynton B C D C, we're there late. Last night, we had an incident where we couldn't even leave the building, because there were cars in the driveway, we couldn't see inside, we were afraid, so we called the police department. I think we waited maybe 20 minutes, the car would not move, we even tried to, you know, like give them signs, car would not move, they were there, the windows were dark, we were scared, we went back, we were told to wait inside, I didn't like the, the person on the other end where they spoke to me, I thought it was unprofessional, and then the car drives away, and then the police car comes after he's gone, so we run out like little children stuck and scared, we get in our cars and we drive away. I get a text with a survey that was terrible, I deleted it, I almost wish I didn't delete it, but I did. I don't like the questions that was in that survey, you don't need to know my age, because I gave you that when I called, you don't need to know what color I am, I am a victim, almost victim, and no one came to my rescue, but I saw cars go up and down gateway, police cars, up and down gateway, shoo, 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 and we're, we're there saying, oh my God, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, scared to death, literally, and I'm not, I'm a native New Yorker, I don't scare easily, not at all. I am asking that someone, please, and another thing, why isn't the police department open? Why isn't the door open where I can go in? I think a couple of years ago, I came here and I said to you, to you guys, I felt like I was having a heart attack, and I was sitting in the parking lot, nobody came, nobody came to see, see about me, I was talking on the speaker, nobody came outside to see about me, can we change that, so that we have, I don't even know how to get in the building of the police department.
The police chief's in the back, I would recommend you speak to him, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for answering me, thank you.
Thank you. And chief, if you could connect with her. All right, next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chrissy Ward, I am a Florida resident of 47 years. What I mostly do when I come here, I always listen, because I like to hear the hearts of people, and I met Mr. Dugger on yesterday, I must say he's an honorable dude, you know, whatever, you know, just from meeting him. But far as everything goes, we have people who have been qualified, that have come in and haven't done a great job, people who are not qualified and don't do a good job. I have an issue just with, like, everybody, just basically, because I think, like, hearing from people all the time, and what they are telling you and what's going on, the people aren't being heard at all. I don't think we need to spend a whole bunch of money, or whatever, to try to find somebody, we got some grassroots in Boynton Beach, 80-plus thousand residents, who probably qualify for this position, considering that HR has said that they put it in different compartments and different levels of, and he's not qualified. So my thing is, yeah, we need to do a modification, because the modification needs to be done, because you need to give other people opportunities that you would just brush pass quickly, and I don't really think, like, our HR needs to be the one to look through this, and I'm going to tell you why, because the gentleman who had a master's degree, that should have been given a job, more than likely got looked over, so I think, like, there's an issue there, I think, like, we got a lot of sickness inside the city, it's sick, and it's metastasizing in all different departments, and that's one thing about just wrongdoing and liars, because my grandma always said, if a thief comes, you know what he's going to do, he's going to steal, but the one thing about a liar, they'll do anything to get what they want and do what they want. On-the-job training, that's what he's saying, I really don't, he's saying, like, I don't really understand the job, I will ask somebody else, I wouldn't circle myself around people, and I'm not going to get any applause, and I really don't need them, but the thing is, the people that are teaching you, if it's Andrew, why don't we swap until he's got all the on-the-job training, to swap it back? Have we not even thought about that? Like, put one in place and put him as the assistant, so he can learn and he can glean, because once he gleans, then he'll know, yeah, he's a good protector, probably, or whatever, but I'm just saying, let's be more open-minded.
It's on, should be.
Bryce Graham, second vice president, National Network, Central Florida Chapter, been coming to this community for the better part of eight months, during that time, I've watched a lot go on, I watched the politics, I watched the, the ride and the wave of the people crying for a city manager to be fired, and people played on that, and I'm watching the conspiracy all unfold even now, that how can you possibly hire a man who, number one, works in the police department, good that he's charismatic, good that he knows the community, but not qualified to lead a city, doesn't know what TIF dollars are? How can you possibly do that? Would you hire a financial advisor based off of his charisma, based off of him just knowing you? Or would you want to hire a financial advisor that knew what they were doing with your money? That's number one. Number two, is this a stick-up for what is about to transpire with Mark Song? That an appeal will have to happen, and he as the city manager would have to review it, and possibly rehire and/or repay back Mark Song? Can this community see his record as a police officer before you would think about or consider hiring him? And I would suggest that you all put out a national search and vet the people who are qualified to leave this city, qualified to handle a budget, qualified to lead staff, qualified to meet the people and greet the people in this community, and I think it has been said loud and clear, that the people would want you to do that, not based off of personal agendas or charisma, not based off of politics, but based off of the betterment and the future of this city.
All right, next speaker. Sir, we're going to take turns on the podium, so now it's your turn.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Jared Boland.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jared Bowlin. I'm a resident here for about thirteen years. I'm a business owner in the area and I'm in the personal training industry. And I could tell you right now, I didn't graduate college. I had such a passion for what I did. You know, I was pretty much self-taught and I've been in the same business for over twenty-five years. I can tell you that the education in this world has absolutely changed. There's not as much homework coming home. We're not learning from books. We're learning from TV screen, YouTube, and so on and so forth. So what exactly makes a qualification? We give Dan a stack of books, make him read it, take a test. He passed. He gets into the seat and he can't apply all that knowledge. As a personal trainer, some of my best knowledge and my best training came from when I figured out what wasn't working. Hey, she's running, she's jumping, she's not losing weight. What's going on? I gotta find a different route. I consulted with lots of other trainers. I took what I thought I could use from the people that were in my business and in my community. I added my own spin on it and I made it work. So the education and the qualification, I'm not qualified to, you know, do what I do. But after twenty-five years, I've trained Olympic athletes. I've trained local baseball teams, local volleyball teams. And honestly, I currently train the Boynton Beach Police Department. I've been there for seven years with no formal education, just a lot of determination, a lot of mistakes being made and a lot of opportunities, as I call them, to make huge changes. I think that's what Dan is gonna be able to do. We've invested eighteen years of our time with Dan. He's proven that he's not just sitting on the road. He's not just sitting on a desk. He wants to move forward. He wants to become a sergeant, lieutenant, and captain and move up. Well, this is another opportunity for him to do so. I think would be silly to put out a bunch of feelers somewhere and get somebody who's book smart, somebody that can answer some questions right. And then we get him in here and we find out that, you know, what, he has no application. He can't apply his knowledge, all this knowledge that we think he has because he hasn't been in Boynton Beach for eighteen years. This guy, maybe he hasn't walked every street. Maybe he doesn't know every citizen. But you know, what's a two-way street? You know, the people that are running, go up and talk to them. They're all approachable. Get to know these people and what they're about. Make your decision off of that. Don't make your decision off of whether or not he can pass an exam because I haven't passed very many. I've been in the same field for over twenty-five years. I vote for Dan, bud. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Leonard Wells. When you have to bear with me, I lost my voice yelling at the kids on the football field. All right, I've been a resident. I'm forty-three years old, so I count every last one of those years as a resident right here. I'm an Army vet. Several members of this community have even been my Sunday school teachers. Revan A is one. Matt McCray is one. So I've been in this community my whole life. I rep my city by repping my family. I rep myself by repping my family and my city. By sharing the experiences that we felt over here in District Two. They haven't all been pleasant. Some of my interactions with police officers as a grown man, as a citizen of this city, a veteran who served his country, has not all been positive. And they leave lasting impressions, lasting impressions. Even to the point where I heard somebody said fake news when someone spoke of some of the disasters that happened. S.J. laying in the road, dead, thirteen years old, a kid with a beautiful smile. Leaves lasting impressions. So don't call that fake news, please. Make sure I say everything. Some of the impressions I've had being a football coach here in the city and some of the interactions with some of the police officers that went out their way to make sure that the kids had left an impression. I see people that I have not known go out their way to make impressions and they don't know the extent of what they do. Some of my, I say again, some of my interactions were uncalled for. But some of my interactions with them in a positive manner, when it comes to this community for the kids, the police officers have done wonderful things. But I don't know if that makes you qualified to run a city. Not being trained probably hurts. It seems like everybody says and they vouch for him. I do mean voucher matters. He's a good guy, but I don't want to pay somebody on the job training to do that job. Police sometimes scare me. And I speak for a lot of people in my district. But as I say, the more positive interaction that goes along, you see us make positive moves for each other in this community. The police helping us and then we can help them. I know my time's up, but as I say, I'm an old city resident. My grandfather, old city resident, Lester Allen, one thing he always told me. One thing he always told me, he said, boy, measure two, three times so you only cut once.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Harry Woodworth. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm not gonna go into the names. I didn't go into the names the last time I spoke. Lived here thirty-five years. I've been speaking at the commission for most of that time. I'll bet as you sit up there, you wish you'd seen some of these faces over the last two or three years even. It would be nice if the turnout here tonight was representative of the people in this community and not just for one single person. There's a lot of issues in this city. It's been a tough year. No sense going over that. That water's under the bridge. The whole topic of this meeting ought to be hiring the most qualified person for this job. If this city was a ship with eighty thousand paying passengers, a crew of nine hundred people, and the crew and the passengers had selected you guys to pick the next captain because we don't have one, how would you go about that? Go down to the banana boat and look around? There's fifty boats down there and those guys can all take you out the inlet and over the bar. Okay, is that what you want? Because it's here. Change the requirements and go get one. This is an ocean liner with eighty thousand souls on it, nine hundred really good crew. And you guys got to find a captain that can drive an ocean liner in deep water away from the rocks we've managed to put this boat on. Not you guys maybe, you had a lot of help. But it's time to change that dynamic and it's not gonna work by picking somebody from the banana boat fishing fleet. And I don't disagree with anything that was said about the man. I met him briefly. Seems like a wonderful guy. I'll probably take him shooting up at the club. But the point is, that's not what this is about. This is about hiring the best person you can hire. If it was an airline full of eighty thousand people and you guys were the crew and your names was all over the side of the airplane, who would you put in the cockpit? Somebody threw a Piper Cub? Hell, that's me. I'll fly that for you. You want somebody who knows what all those lights and whistles do on that airplane? And you know what? I can take off a seven forty-seven because all you gotta do is give it power. Anything where the wings will fly. Try landing that baby, okay? And that's where we're gonna be in about two years. There is no doubt in my mind that whatever you guys decide to do for the next year will probably be okay. Will you continue to get bad press? Yeah, you will. But at the end of the year, when we do the next budget and the one after that, it's time to land the thing or bring the boat to dock. And who's gonna be the captain and who's gonna be the pilot? And that's what your job is here tonight, not pick one person. Pick a process that works. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara O'Reedy. Thank you also for letting us speak tonight. I have with me tonight the ICMA membership application, which is the International City Managers Association. You guys are all busy, so I kind of assumed that you had not had an opportunity to read the application. Being an ICMA member was a preferred qualification. As Harry said, we are not a small city. We have a quarter of a billion-dollar budget. And I would prefer not to have somebody with on-the-job training to run it. We've got a lot of faces here tonight. Obviously, if Mr. Duggar was in a popularity contest, he would win tonight because all these fresh faces, where were they? Where have they been? Now they're here tonight. And I also hope that there are some policemen on the streets tonight somewhere because I don't know where we have a policeman shortage. They all seem to be here. That's my comment, and I wish that you would go out for a headhunter, please. Thank you, Andrew. I think that we need a professional person. If you want to be treated as professionals, you need to do the professional thing and hire a professional, please. Thank you.
My name is Buck Buchanan. I've been a city resident for many, many years. And this is not about Dan. I think Dan, I've met him, seems like a great guy. We're looking for a chief of police. I'd probably be here supporting him. This is not about Dan's qualifications for city manager. This is about you. When you came in, I've been around a lot of bad city commissions in this town, my years. When you came in, you brought with it a stench of self-serving, politics, and collusion. Whether that's what it was or not, that's what you did. And all the political stuff come in immediately with the firing of the city manager, the PBSO stuff and all the interrelated stuff. That's why, for your sake and for the sake of citizens, to have faith in this city commission, you need to go to an outside source, come up with the best candidate. And that doesn't mean this candidate is gonna live outside the city. He'll come here. He'll come here. Do the job, learn what they have to learn about the city, but they'll have the skills to do the job. But most of all, it's important for the politics of this city to wipe your hands of the politics of the city and make this a neutral outside choice. Thank you.
All right, next speaker on the other podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Regis of Boynton B C D C. I don't know Mr. Duggar. Never met him, don't know who he is, so this is not about him. But I have a few questions. Do you trust your HR manager? Because your HR manager was given the responsibility, I think, to bring the most qualified candidate to you guys for this position. She is the one that recommends all of the different higher-ups in the city, the high-level positions in the city. You all gave her the instructions. I was sitting right in the audience and she went forward with it. It appears that she came back and said whoever Mr. Duggar is, is not qualified. Now, this is a person that hires all of the high-paying persons or make recommendations for all of the high-paying positions in the city. That is her job. It appears that she said Mr. Duggar was not the best candidate for this position. From what I'm hearing tonight, Mr. Duggar is a wonderful police officer, great at his job. And that seems to be where he is best served. I don't know what this is about. I'm not sure I even understand the process that you guys are going through because you all are not taking the recommendations of the HR manager. I heard someone said earlier that when he was asked, who is going to train him? He says Andrew will train him. So if Andrew is qualified and has the technical skills to train him, why is Andrew not being recommended for the city manager's position? I think he's the one that should get it. If he is the one that's going to train Mr. Duggar. We all have our areas of expertise. I can't do your job. You can't do mine, probably. I wouldn't profess to try to go and do the job of a physician or a pilot. They're trained and they have the skill set for that particular job. Why are you considering a police officer who seems to be an excellent police officer? And I don't know the man. I've never met him, so this is not anything against him. Why are you considering someone who is a police officer, an excellent police officer, to take him out of his comfort zone and put him in that position? It makes no sense to some of us.
All right, next speaker to the next podium on the right, or my right, your left.
Susan Oier, thank you. So I have a copy of the City Managers Classification Specifications. And Julie, I've known for years. She's outstanding. She's a wonderful HR person. So, you know, I'm just reading off this for those of you who are unaware. So I'm looking at the minimum qualifications, which is a bachelor's degree. And I understand while one of the candidates does not have a degree in the field that's listed, I personally think his degree is acceptable. But has he had those fifteen credit hours of master-level coursework in the field that is, we're trying to hire for? Because that is a minimum qualification. This person does not have that, to the best of my knowledge. And I do think he's a wonderful person. I've enjoyed speaking with him. I think he's an outstanding officer. I don't think he's the right person for this job. You also need to have, within the past ten years, six years of highly responsible managerial experience in municipal or county management. Being a police officer is, and he's a great one, I'm not disputing that. This is not six years of managerial experience in municipal or county management. This comes directly from your, I know, what you say you need to have. This is the job description. Preferred is someone with a master's degree from an accredited college or university and someone who's an ICMA-credited, credentialed manager. And I have those. They've all been given a copy. We might want to note that, link the service. One of the things that the ICMA requires or asks for is a minimum two years is considered necessary to render professional service to a local government. They should not engage in intimate or romantical relationships with elected officials or board appointees. Apologies they report to, one day a support, sorry, appoint or supervisor either directly or indirectly because there's rumors flying. Looking at page four of the ICMA, the backside that you have. Up at the top, it says they should not participate in an election campaign on behalf of or in opposition to candidates for the governing body, which he has worked for you guys on this. I would also like to say, we need a city manager that hasn't spent the last couple of months telling staff he will fire them if he gets hired, and he is going through the city hall doing that. We all know that when city managers come in, they have to move to the city that they are working for. So where they come from doesn't matter. It's where they end up. No, they don't know our city first off, but they know cities. They know how to run them. And Andrew, I think maybe you should be the city manager, and it sounds like we all agree on that one. And I want to finish up with, if we, and I do truly support that we hire a headhunter, and sorry, I'm taking my ten extra seconds. If this headhunter truly feels that the two candidates that are up for, you know, selection are truly the cream of the crop, then the headhunter will pick them and bring them to you. And I'm taking, I don't normally go over, but I'm taking a moment.
Just wrap it up. Thank you.
I am, I am. But we are a hundred-year-old-plus city. We are one of the legacy cities in this county. We deserve the best possible and we need executive skills.
Thank you, Susan.
Then we need what a headhunter will bring to us. Thank you for the extra moment. Andrew for city manager.
All right, one second, one second. Next speaker. You may begin.
My name is Kathleen Hawkins. I am.
One second, Ms. Hawkins.
Okay.
Let's make sure everybody quiets down. All right, go ahead.
I am a resident of Boynton Beach. I've been a resident almost sixty years. So I guess I'm dating myself. But nevertheless, I've heard the applause. I didn't know that I was coming to an election. I thought we were coming to hear about the candidates for city manager. I thought we were coming to hear about the candidates for city manager. I don't believe tonight a decision had been made for that. But I still know this, that whatever is going to take place is going to have to be by your qualifications. I've worked in management for years. And one thing I do know, you can't just walk into it and try to handle a large budget. When you have that budget, you have to know what to do with it, how to spend it, when to spend it. And you cannot swindle it. When you swindle the money, you can't go back and get it because it's gone. So I believe that if the training, or whatever is needed, if this person that they keep talking about, who I heard applause, I didn't know I was sitting in this section, but I was sitting in this section with Dan over there. So, because that was the only seat available, and I heard a lot that was said. But all I'm saying is that if this is something that you're running after, every position that I ever wanted, I went back and got training for it. So when I got to it, I was hired, not by who knew me or how great a person I was, but I was hired because I did something more, because I wanted it. So if it's 15 hours of this, and masters in this, and bachelors in that, do some work. You work for a city that'll send you to school. So go to school and get some of these qualifications, and come back again. I don't know which way it's going to work, so I got to say this real quick. Mayor, they still haven't put that light outside my street yet. I had to get it in because I'm waiting on that light outside my street. And I live over by Rolling Green, so please, oh, Andrew, come on, man.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hawkins, it took me two years to get those lights in the other side. So we're going to do our best, and I know Andrew's definitely on it. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Don Sanders, live in Chapel Hill. I actually am an airline pilot, 11 years with JetBlue, 10 years Miami Air. I don't know if y'all saw the news not long ago, but a passenger actually did land a plane that the captain had a heart attack on. So yeah, passengers can land planes. That's just one thing. Facebook, Apple, Microsoft, Twitter, Oracle, Carnival Cruise Lines, iHeartRadio, Best Buy, you know what they all have in common? Zero degrees. CEOs have no, not even a bachelor's. So you're going to tell me we have to have a master's degree and one thing to be a city planner? Not the skills. We need somebody that's local, who lives here, who has vested interests here, who has put all his time here, who knows all, you guys know this guy, I'm sure. He's been around, he knows all, I mean, he knows a lot of the people around here. And here with city hall and all that stuff. You know, we want somebody whose taxes go back to Boynton Beach, who wants a good future for this city, who's spent their time there. Not going out and finding some person who's looking for the paycheck. Look at the qualifications, I got a nice fat paycheck, cool. Guess what? Look where that's gotten us before. We sold the downtown area here for $30. Really? We sold our downtown to a development for $30. And look where that's at. Any development going on down here? I don't think so. So I, my personal opinion, I'm on forums for my Chapel Hill and all that stuff. And we need somebody who's dialed in and who is relevant to the needs and problems facing our city today. And I'm supporting Dana Duggar, so.
All right, next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Pastor Ree Whitley, and I'm with Faith in Florida Palm Beach County. I had an opportunity yesterday to meet with Mr. Duggard. And let me tell you, he is an amazing individual. Don't take that from him. They're charismatic. And he came into a space where it may have not been the warmest space for him to be. But he stood there and he had very, there was a dialogue there that I appreciated. I do want to create a relationship with him, to be honest, because he's really that good a person. I listened to his answers, and I really think that he's a passionate individual. However, however, we put a pause right there. I still can't believe y'all let me speak for three minutes, it's amazing, I love it. My grandson came home the other day. He's 11 years old. He says, "Grandpa, I'm going to be the quarterback for my football team." Like, huh? Says, "I want to be the quarterback." I'm like, "Grandson, do you even know what the quarterback is supposed to do?" He says, "I've seen it on TV, and I could run real fast," and all of these things. And I'm like, "Yeah, it's true." And I started to question the process that those coaches used to even put him in a position to be the quarterback. He went out there for two practices, and they cleaned his clock. And he came back, he says, "Grandpa, I think I want to be a wide receiver and a cornerback." But I knew this, I knew this. I wasn't upset with him for trying to be the quarterback. I was upset at the coaches that knew he didn't have the skill set or the experience to be a quarterback. And they put him in that position to not only hurt himself, but hurt the team. I appreciate Mr. Duggard's ambition for wanting to go to the highest seat in Boynton Beach. I would do the same thing. But I questioned the leadership that would not only not exercise best practices, but I'm questioning the process on how he got to the top three with the qualifications that he has. I want to build a relationship with this guy. Everybody on all accounts says he's a great person. My friends who know him say he's a great person. But is he the best fit and the most qualified for this position in this space, in this time? And unfortunately, I don't think he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, we have two podiums. All right.
My name is Mildred Hay. I live in Boynton, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue. I come to all the city council meetings, more than some of the commissioners. When you become a city commissioner, there are very few things you have to satisfy to be one. And it's scary, it really is. Because the decisions you have to make, and the people you have to work with, they know more than you. It takes a good two years for a city commissioner to know how to be one. And by the time they get to really know, their term is up. The terms for these people are going to be up, and they're going to leave us with somebody that has no idea what they're doing. And they know that. Something has been going on. I don't know what is going on, but something is going on. There's a master plan. Part of the plan was to get rid of the city manager we had. We were supposed to go with the sheriff. Sheriff didn't want us. Was it the commission that didn't want to go still? They would have gone if the sheriff would have taken them. That was a mistake that was avoided. Now we're headed for another one. And we don't have the sheriff to say no. So it looks like they're going to go with this because that's the plan. Plan was made before they took the oath, I think. There's a lot of things going on here. As I said, I come to all the city council meetings. Somebody's got us going by a script. And the script has this person's name on it. And they're going to give them to us, all you kind people that came tonight, I've not seen y'all before. Y'all came tonight to support your friend. But each one of you that has a job of some kind had qualifications to meet. We want the best for Boynton, all of us do. I've lived here since 1970. Actually, the last night of 1969, I loved this city. I came all the way from Delray. So I just want you to understand that loving a city does not make me qualified to be the city manager. Neither does it for Mr. Duggar. It doesn't for you that love him. We should have the best, somebody qualified that has some training. You can ridicule training all you want. But none of you have a job that you have no training for. Please, for God's sake, open your eyes, open your heart, open your brain. Do not give us someone that is not qualified. You know this man is not qualified.
Thank you, Ms. Hay.
I don't know what you owe him.
Ms. Hay, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. I want to be even more welcome if you would do the right thing for this city.
All right, next speaker, thank you. All right, absolutely, we have two podiums everybody can use. And after everyone's done in the in-person group, we're going to go online. So go ahead and begin, sir, begin by stating your name for the record. Everybody could quiet down.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Ballaschuri. I'm a resident of Boynton Beach for almost 20 years now. For almost that time, I have known Daniel Duggar. What are we really talking about here? We're talking about either paper experience that everyone's crafting and looking for, or we're talking about real-life experience. Okay? I can speak specifically to the character. As I've watched Daniel grow from a road patrol officer all the way up through the ranks, and during all that time, he has served not only his country, but his community outstandingly. Now, having worked with police officers in the past, here's what I can tell you about them. Having the job for that long a period of time does one thing. It increases the speed by which you can make decisions. Your decision-making paradigm is accelerated. You learn how to do things way faster than the average person who just sits down and studies a book. Because you're constantly involved with people day-to-day, all shapes and sizes and colors and cultures, every single day of your job, every hour of your shift, you're involved with the people of Boynton Beach. And that's how I know this man can do this job incredibly well because he came from the bottom, and he's now able to serve the top. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Any other in-person speakers? Please start approaching the podium so we can see you. But if there's anybody else who would like to speak, please approach the podium.
Hi, Ernest George McNoly. That's my legal name. 710 Northeast 7th Street, Unit 407, Boynton Beach, Florida 33435. That's my legal address. Says on my passport and my driver's license. And I know to my right, there's people who don't have that. No one knows where they're from, no one knows where they start out in the morning, and no one knows why they're always absent. But that's beside the point. Let's talk about this meeting tonight. The greatest comment was the woman said, "What are they all doing here? Who's out in the street with all the crime? Every time you come to a meeting, when you decide on a city manager, or this or that, you pack this place with police and firemen, and you know what? It's fearful. It's really fearful. They're very intimidating." And then what you, and then what you turn around and do, they get you to say that we're intimidating you, when that's, when that's a bunch of baloney. Everybody in this city knows that this police department has major problems. And now, and now what was just decided by the police department's internal affairs department, now is probably going to bring not just a civil lawsuit against Mark Schoen, but now it's probably going to bring the Department of Justice in. And you know what? You remember, you remember how, like now, when, you remember how the law works? When it comes to a Department of Justice investigation, it's also people who work with a accused criminal. It's also people who say, "Oh, for 20 years, I never said anything." And it's people who got together, like in this town, politics, the firemen, the police, they're stoking, they're stoking Mark Schoen's defense. They don't stop talking about him. You're trying to load up the city with police and firemen. Everywhere you look, there's another fireman, there's another police person, there's the wife, the uncle, the cousin. You're taking this city over, and nobody likes it. Nobody likes it. But you're not going to stop. And you fill the audience with a bunch of people that are biased. And look at all these officers, we're all in fear. Look, they can't even shut up for five minutes. We're all in fear of this. Look at this. Where did you ever go, where did you ever go to a city meeting where you got armed officers everywhere? And then I went to go outside, the one in the back said, "You can't go out there." What are you going to say? And that's what you're encouraging. You own it, every one of you own it. And you better get us an outside city manager.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please order in the chambers so we can move on to the next speaker. All right.
My name is Kathy Kelly. I've lived in Lejeville for 14 years. And I worked for a Fortune 500 company for 26 years as the hiring manager. And my experience has been that you can have somebody from the outside that looks good on paper, but you have somebody from the inside who has proven themselves and who has a vested interest in this job or in the company. But they prove to be the better candidate for the job. That's all I have to say.
Are there any other in-person public comments speakers? Please approach the podium now so I know you wish to speak. Otherwise, I will close public comments in person. Seeing none, Mani, we're going to go online now to the virtual public speakers. Could you please let us know how many of them have their digital hands raised?
We have six hands raised.
All right, Mani, please go ahead and unmute one of them.
Oh, boy. Make that now seven, okay. So we'll go on to our first speaker, David Katz. David, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name, thank you.
You fellows, people hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turk, and is that a new mustache? Looks pretty good. Anyway, and Mr. Stables, Tennessee looking pretty good by now, I guess, huh? There are dollars in the city manager's budget for a search firm. Be about $25,000. And if you want to take the money from there, there are open positions that allow for that. So the money is there. It's not like we'd have to go to an unbudgeted funding for executive search, which is needed. At the community meeting last night, Mr. Duggar said he had 200 to 300 people who were in favor of him being city manager. I guess some of them here tonight. But Pastor Dames pointed out, there were probably 20 times that that really think that he doesn't have the qualifications. And Commissioner Turk, and I know that he got an email from a Mr. Butch Bione representing Sterling Village, 840 units, and Boynton Intercosse Group representing 3,000 residents, where he has the pulse of those folks, saying that we should have and go to an outside search firm. The HR department, which provided the city commission, I think back in, I think it was in June, phases of hiring a city manager, a qualified city manager, that would take us into December. So I'm trying to figure out what's this rush to judgment that we're having here. Mr. Duggar is a very nice guy. He was at the meeting, and he could charm the paint off a piece of furniture, there's no doubt about it. His neighbors have told us that, his friends have told us that, that he's a great cop. And I think if he wanted to move up and stuff, as Mr., I think his last name was Darker, said, then his next step is major, or assistant police chief. And speaking about police chief or fire chief, this city- And speaking about police chief or fire chief, this city went through a much more thorough process than you're doing tonight, or have been doing, to hire a new fire chief and a new police chief for this city. An executive search firm is needed. The city doesn't need somebody who can make a decision in a nanosecond, as one of the previous speakers said. We need a city manager who's going to act in a deliberate fashion and act with caution and then make a decision. So again, this is not about his personality. Sure, he's a nice guy. It's about qualifications. It's about the process. It's about the perception of the process, which doesn't look very good. We need to go to an outside search firm. That's what you guys need to do. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mani, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Who would that be? Mani, who would be the next speaker?
All right, we're just moving, names are jumping around on me. Okay, our next speaker is Lamar Jones. Lamar, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Lamar, if you're there, please click the microphone next to your name. Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker.
We'll circle back to that person. So let's move on to the next one.
Right. Okay, our next speaker is Katie McLaughlin. Katie, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Katie?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Good, thank you. I first want to start by saying thank you to everyone who is on the commission and the mayor for taking on this task. It's obviously a very diligent and difficult task to take on, and you guys are doing it beautifully and listening to everyone's concerns. So thank you for doing that for us. I definitely have a lot to say, but I'm going to keep it short. I have lived in Boynton Beach for 27 years. And I want to go back in time for just a minute. I would like you to remember that the last time there was a vacancy, and you'll have to excuse me, I am battling laryngitis, the last time there was a vacancy, Mr. Woodrow Hay was the mayor. And three of the commissioners were appointed with no public comment allowed. And after a national search for a new city manager, Mr. Woodrow Hay disregarded that search and installed the interim city manager, who did not submit herself to the scrutiny of a search, and no public comment was allowed. She was not evaluated. And yet, Mr. Woodrow Hay went with her. It's all in the minutes. You can look it up yourselves. I have been on a hiring committee. I have conducted national searches with headhunters. I've looked at outside candidates. I do not believe that is the best way to go. I do not think that is in the best interest of the taxpayers. And I do believe that the majority of the people have spoken tonight and side with Mr. Duggar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, our next speaker is David Rosenthal. David, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Is there a David? All right, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Mani, we can always circle back to these individuals.
Okay, next speaker will be Stephen Grant. Stephen, you're unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. There you go.
Thank you, Manny. Hello, Stephen B. Grant, Esquire, P.O. Box 424, Boynton Beach, Florida 33425. I would just like to thank you as the commission for what you're doing. It is not an easy job to make this determination. And the one thing that, you know, you would have to have with the city managers, someone you trust. And that's kind of what you heard from everybody here, is that everybody trusts Dan Duggar. And that's where my mentality, and knowing him for over six years, is that I've seen him go from the sergeant to the captain to where he is now. And for people to say that he is not the best qualified or he doesn't have the right qualifications, I would disagree. And I would say that he is the right candidate for the city of Boynton Beach and what we need to move forward. And I would like to thank interim city manager Jim Stables for his dedication to the city. But that means we're also not going to have a city manager before we even hire a headhunting firm. And so it's an easy decision now to select our captain, Dan Duggar, for the future of Boynton Beach. And on a side note, I'd like to thank the service of Mike Rumpf. I was able to see him today at City Hall. And we have wonderful people that work here at the city of Boynton Beach. And, you know, me being here online, I get to see all of their names following what's going on. They are engaged, and I think they're just as excited to move forward with your decision. Thank you.
Mani, who's next?
Okay, our next speaker is Ace Tilton Ratcliffe. Ace, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. There you go.
Hi there. Ace Tilton Ratcliffe, P.O. Box 696, Boynton Beach, Florida 33436. This is, hello. This is a conversation about competence or politics. And, I mean, it's pretty basic to see that in an application that lists three minimum qualifications, not having two-thirds of them is a failure. There's nothing else that needs to be said here. This isn't the way that this city needs to go, period, considering the way that we've had so many issues with the police force at a nationwide level and at a local level. Your city has sat before this commission and begged and pleaded for this to be a different direction for the city to go. And to move forward with someone who is unqualified to be a city manager and is also part of the police force that has been acting in a way that not just hurts members of the community, but leaves them dead, is, I believe, a failure of the commission, would be a failure of the commission and is really an insult to so many of the citizens who have stood up here over the last months and years to talk about this. I absolutely do not stand with Mr. Duggar. And I don't believe that that has been the overwhelming voice of support that we have heard here today. I really hope that the commission moves forward in either not selecting Mr. Duggar or hiring a headhunter who can bring us some more candidates, who can at least hit the minimum qualifications on the application. Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Mani, hold one second, one second. All right, next speaker, Mani.
Okay, our next speaker is Heather Stables.
All right, Ms. Stables.
Stables, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name.
All right, Mani, I'm not hearing that person. Can we move on to any others? And how many more do we have to go?
One new speaker and two more to try to come back to.
All right, Mani, as you know, we close acceptance of additional online speakers at the end of public comments. So no more at this point.
Understood.
Let's finish with the ones that we have.
Okay, our next speaker is Rafael Nunez. Rafael, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rafael Nunez. I'm a, I served in the military in wartime, and I wasn't going to talk today, but then I heard Mr. Hay, which sounded like a reading from a script or something. And he made a decision without listening to the people, and that kind of concerned me. Also, there was a bias with his wife, talking on behalf of just against that, who I don't know. I don't know this Dan guy. But I just want to remind the commissioners that your job is to serve the people, not this, this, this new city manager needs to be elected by the people. And the people definitely has chosen that. And there was no gentleman here, Joe, Joe, Joe something, Joe Justman, I think is the name. He was trying to, he's running for District 2. By my Google research, all of this happened right now. I Googled it, it came out, it say, hey, some weird relationship with, I think he's Mr. Katz, who's been investigated by the FBI according to Google. And so all this question and stuff going behind. And we got this Joe guy, who definitely doesn't read from a script because he sounds very passionate. So I think that we have to have all of these aspects in mind when making a decision and no basis just of bias or opinions, but actual facts. I think Dan is the man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ray, that was the last of our first-time speakers, so we can try giving the other two speakers a second try to allow them to speak.
And who was this, Mani?
Our second-time try is David Rosenthal. David, you're unmuted. Please feel free to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, thank you, Mayor. My name is David Rosenthal, and I'm a longtime resident of Boynton Beach. First, I want to say, Commissioner Hay, after watching you speak the last few meetings, it seems you consistently like to single out one of your colleagues. I won't name anyone specifically, but you know who I'm talking about. It's pretty obvious your negative demeanor seems to always be directed towards one person. I cannot figure out why that is. Being a man of God or proclaimed experienced public servant, you sure don't exercise the meaning of grace. I hope you can do better, and I also hope that you can think for yourself and not read off a script from your cell phone. If not, then I hope that Joe Justman works hard to become the new District 2 commissioner. But that's not why I want to speak. I'm speaking to encourage the commission to select a local candidate whom has lived and served in this city and knows the people, businesses, and opportunities our city has to offer. Qualifications are great, but then, but they don't mean anything if there's no integrity or good character. I hope you make the right decision when looking at this. And I hope you consider the police captain, who is a dedicated servant, husband and father, and will put the safety and prosperity of this community first instead of personal gain like those in our past. Also, I want to point out that I hope the commission does not become negatively influenced by those who have impacted the community negatively. If you look into some of these people, half of them don't even live in our city. Some of them have been investigated by the FBI for blackmailing public officials like Mr. Katz or ex-teacher Susan Oyer, who have been fired for bullying her students for the color of their skin with racial slurs or bigoted immigration comments, courtesy of Arizona Sentinel. Just do quick research on these people, and you will see their true colors. I always looked into you, Barbara Reddy, and it seems you don't even live in city limits of Boynton Beach and have tried to previous manage and lose our land in the Town Square project. Shame on you for your involvement and favoritism for someone who cut taxpayer millions of dollars. I just want to add, on behalf of the Jewish community, we support the commission and all the good you do, and ask that you make the right decision tonight for the people, not these old political players tied to this old corrupt regime. Thank you for my time.
All right, Mani, are we near the end?
Yes, sir. We have, fortunately, Heather Staples seems to be offline right now. So our last second attempt would be Lamar Jones. Lamar, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name if you'd like to speak.
Going ones, Mr. Jones. Going twice. All right, thank you. So, Mani, is that the end, just to double-check?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, Heather Staples doesn't seem to be online. We can speak to her later on.
Say that one more time?
Unfortunately, Heather Staples seems to be offline. We can send her a message to see, hopefully she can come back online later on.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have heard public comments in the chambers, and we have heard public comments online. I now close public comments. I'd now like to return to the commission and ask them the same question I asked them in the beginning. My ultimate goal here is to get consensus, to get a direction. And as many of you know, it's not about one person making one decision. It is the collective will of this body. So I need to hear from my colleagues. Are you ready to proceed? Are you interested in doing an executive search firm? Or are you interested in reposting the job? Whatever your decision is, I need to know it. I've heard the position made by Commissioner Hay and Vice Mayor Cruz, but I need to hear the others so we can get a sense of what the majority will is. All right. Yes, we can absolutely make some comments. Now is the time. Vice Mayor Cruz, go ahead.
All right. I do have some notes because this was a very lengthy meeting, so there's that. Just for everybody's awareness, I had the opportunity to interview all the candidates. As we know, our current interim city manager, Mr. Stables, has withdrawn himself from the application, and therefore we are left with only two applicants. I had a two-hour interview with Mr. Robert Kunro. He was, he was very good. I had a really great conversation with him. He has relevant experience, and he was very well-versed in municipal policy. He mentioned, one of the questions I asked of him was, "Are you willing to move to the city of Boynton Beach? Because that matters to me, and that matters to my constituents, and I'm going to listen to my constituents." Moving on with that, he mentioned that he has a child in high school who is in 11th grade, and it would not be feasible for him to move into the city. I respectfully understand that. 11th grade is not, it's almost graduation. It's not really the best time to be moving your child from one school to another. But we did have a really great conversation, and we had really good feedback. I was also aware that he's worked for Lauderdale before under Police Chief Michael Gregory. That was just, it's a fact, it's not an opinion. The only thing that I have to say is that there was a bit of a lack of knowledge of the most important issues in our city, including Town Square. But besides that, he was an excellent person. I definitely appreciate him and thank him for his time. And he's a very, very, very good applicant. Now that we come to this point, we have to think about our city, and we have to think about what our future looks like and what kind of city we want to be. Boynton Beach has some very specific issues. We need a leader that cares and someone who's going to lead us in the right direction. The candidate that I'm talking about has proven himself. He has a vested interest in this community. He has institutional knowledge, experience, understands the history, the issues of the city, and personally knows several local business owners because of living here for over 18 years. I do want to make a statement that we need to work together as a city. I've seen a lot of division tonight with people criticizing each other, and I don't think that's the direction we need to take. We're a diverse city with different kinds of people, different backgrounds and ethnicities, and we need to be kind, respectful, and good to each other. I have a master's degree in public administration. I also have a bachelor's degree in legal studies. But that doesn't make me qualified, or it doesn't take away 18 years of experience. Captain Duggar has 23 years of law enforcement experience. Is adept in budgeting, manages personnel and operations. He has deep knowledge of Boynton Beach policies and procedures. Promoting from within is important to me, not only in my day job, but also in this city. It's important for succession planning, it's important for morale, and it's important for retaining employees right here in Boynton Beach. If we don't promote from within, if we always bring outsiders to the top positions in our city, what kind of message are we sending to our staff? It doesn't matter your loyalty for 18 years, it doesn't matter what you've done, you're going to get a kick to the curve, and you're not going to get any new opportunities. The city manager position sets the direction for the city. The city manager delegates the majority of the tasks to the assistant city manager, which we have two of, department directors, and staff. We need a new beginning in Boynton Beach, and I believe Dan Duggar is the best person to move our city forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to hear from my colleagues so we can get consensus direction. We have Commissioner Turkin online and Commissioner Kelly. I'd like to... I'd like to hear your position. Commissioner Turkin, would you like to begin?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So it seems like the community has spoken. You know, and it, it seems that the consensus, you know, from public comment is looking into a local candidate. And that's something that I have been speaking about since day one. Um, in front of us, we have two candidates now, unfortunately. Chief Stables, you withdrew yourself and I'm sad to see that. I think you would do very well in that role. Um, so now we're down to two. One candidate who has extremely a great amount of experience and, you know, has, has been doing the job. And then another candidate who has lived in the city for over 20 years. A candidate that has experience in leadership, critical thinking, budget, relationship building and also has a historic knowledge of this city. Not to mention is an army wartime veteran. And I say that to thank all the veterans that spoke tonight. Because if you, if you have military experience, you know that it comes with leadership skills. It is instilled into you to be a leader and to also be collaborative and know how to get the job done and be mission oriented. You paint the mission, you work together, you leave all personal and emotional issues outside of that. You just get the job done. What I see with Captain Dad, Dan Duggar, is that we have someone who is not just committed to their country, but committed to the city of Boynton Beach that is a family man and has raised his kids here and is a loyal husband and a man of God. I think about our strategic planning workshop back in, I think it was April or May. And every single one of us decided one common thing. What was our number one goal for the city of Boynton Beach? That goal was public safety. That was our number one concern. And all of us agreed on that. With shootings up three years in a row, year over year, over year. Parents are afraid to let their kids play outside because of all the crime and excessive speeding that goes on. And it's a problem and it's something that I don't think that we're putting on the forefront and that's something we need to consider. And so when I think about someone that can look danger in the face, who knows what it's like to sacrifice? And again, who has been in this city? I don't think that there is a better person for the job at this point in time than Captain Dan Duggar. He's got the heart of a warrior from what I understand and what I'm hearing from the community. The mind of a scholar and the servant leadership that this city needs to make to ensure a safer and more prosperous Boynton Beach. With all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to appoint wartime Army veteran, husband, father, police captain in Boynton local, Daniel Duggar, to the appointment of permanent city manager.
Commissioner? I, I'd like to ask, one second, Commissioner, I, I will entertain that motion in a moment, but I just wanted to hear from everybody in the dais first before we have that motion. But your motion is noted, um, and now I'd like to hear from Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first, um, I have been listening to everyone here tonight and, uh, this is not a task that I have taken lightly. And I, and I feel like, um, there's maybe people out there that don't believe that that is the case. But I have spent hours and hours interviewing the candidates and thinking of how I see our city going and what I see for our city, because this is my city too. Um, I interviewed both of the remaining candidates for over two hours apiece. Um, Mr. Conroe from Broward, um, he worked his way up from the very bottom. Um, and through all of the departments to get to where he was. He has the education, but it doesn't equate to the knowledge that you have by knowing your residents and knowing your community. He understands that trust is so important in the role, but it is not something that's given, it is earned. And that was something that we talked about that, um, really sat with me because trust is so important, but it's something that you can't, you don't just get it. It's earned over years and years of hard work. When I asked him why he applied for this position, he said he felt like it was his next step for him. He went on to say that he didn't think that that door was going to open for him where he was, so he searched for somewhere else that had a door that was open for him. And that's why he chose our city. Not because he wanted to serve our city or because he loved our city. It was because it was a next step for him. However, he thought he could serve the city well with the skills that he's earned over the years and in all of his past roles. However, he lives in Broward and just like Vice Mayor said, he has no plans to relocate to the city if offered a position. This is something that we spoke about multiple times in the search for interim city manager, that it was important for the city manager to live in the city where they reside, where they work and, and live. I also spent over two hours getting to know Dan Duggar. And although some people think that I have known him for many years because my husband has worked with him, I have not and I learned more about Dan Duggar in those two and a half hours than I have, could have known over the 18 years. As a resident himself, he's committed to seeing the city succeed. Why would he put himself in a position to just watch the city fail? While education is important, as we've learned tonight by the many comments that we've heard, it is important, but it cannot be the only deciding factor. A person can have all the fancy degrees and all the memberships to all the organizations and still not be able to do the job. Captain Duggar is known and respected in the community and the department. He has the institutional knowledge. He's a veteran, which is a testament to his life of public service. I trust his judgment and he has demonstrated loyalty to the city. He brings that turnkey integrity to work and trust cannot be overvalued. And I feel he brings the tools to do the job if given the chance. Now, I want to, I have spoken over the last couple of weeks, now that I've given my synopsis, um, to the residents in my district and some of the things that were important to them in the city. Public safety, improving downtown, garbage pickup, city events, being responsible with spending of taxpayer dollars. We have the best city staff and they are the backbone to making sure that these things and all the other moving parts keep moving, no matter who is at the helm. And it can never be said enough, I am grateful for all of their hard work and the dedication that they give to this city every single day. And I, so I know that whoever is selected will have the best opportunity to succeed because they have the best support. So in that, I am, I am supporting that we move forward with Dan Duggar.
Commissioner, I thought I saw your hand up earlier.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, you all know my position, but let me just say this, that I've been working with this city in a political, um, aspect since 2007. And in all the time that I've been Commissioner, Vice Mayor and even Mayor, I was told by legal, and I would like this verified, that you cannot vote unless you are present in the chambers, which means that even though, uh, Mr., uh, Thomas Turkin is not here, he's not eligible to vote. He can discuss, he can give input, but as for, he's not physically here, and do not interrupt me. He's not here physically. And unless I've been told an untruth, it has always been that you must be physically present in order to vote on issues. So I will put that before legal and I will ask for that to be addressed.
So this evening, we have our deputy city attorney, Mr. Quentin Morgan, in place of Michael Servillo. Mr. Morgan, could you opine on the comment that was just made?
Sure. Uh, for the record, uh, Quentin Morgan, um, if there were not a physical quorum present, your understanding would be correct, but the laws have been, uh, reviewed to show that if there's a physical quorum present, the person online can vote on, on an issue.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Please. I hear what you're saying, but there is not a physical quorum to elect the city manager, which requires a strong vote, which is four votes instead of three to, to, to make it, uh, a decision on it. So in, in the city manager's position, it takes four votes and you don't, okay? And so you don't have that. You don't have four votes here, strong votes for a majority to rule, to make that decision. Yes, on others, that are three, but not on a, one that requires a strong, uh, vote.
Mr. Morgan, could you please respond and provide clarification?
Sure. Uh, uh, the, the, the amount of votes needed to pass a motion is not dispositive of that particular issue. It's, it's the physical quorum of the city commission in the chamber. So you do have a physical quorum. I, I will add that, um, for purposes of any motion that would come before you, the item on the agenda was to give direction and the, the motion, as, as was stated, as I understand, would, it would be similar to a procurement process where you would have your number one ranked candidate and then similar to the interim position, you would then move to, uh, enter into an agreement and then come back to appoint that person. Because if there is a motion tonight to appoint, there's no terms of or conditions to that particular position. Because the city's manager works underneath the contract.
So, Mr. Morgan, to be clear, number one, Mr. Turkin is able to vote. Is that just for clarity?
Yes, he is.
All right. And number two, you mentioned similar to procurement process, and I think you used the word rank.
Yes.
So if we're, if there's a motion, the motion is to rank someone as one, two, three, something like that, it's not so much to appoint right here, right now. Is that correct? Just help me understand.
That would be my understanding of the process that you all have undertaken.
Because we still have a contract to determine.
You still have a contract to enter into with the prospective person. Um, and if that were not to happen, then you would not have, you know, the appropriate appointment.
Okay. So for clear, I'm sorry, one more question, Vice Mayor, and you can, uh, go next. Um, when do we need the four votes?
When you appoint and, and it'll be a motion to, a resolution to enter into an agreement for the city manager position and appoint that particular person to that role.
So not today?
Not today. It would not be today.
Today, sounds like what you're saying is the motion is to rank someone, number one, begin that process and then whenever that contract is prepared where you actually appoint someone, that's when the four votes is required.
Yeah, so it would be similar to how you appointed, uh, Chief Stables when he was, he was brought in and in the interim position.
Make sure that's clear. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Two, two items. Um, number one, for historical purposes, in 2012, a city manager named Laurie LeVere was appointed by the city commission at a meeting equal to this one. And Mr. Woodrow Hay made the motion. There was one person opposing and they continued with the process. It was done in a city commission chambers. It was done in a meeting exactly like this one because I learn my history and I like to learn from the past and see what's been going on. Um, and in fact, if you look at the agenda, the minutes of the meeting in 2012, that is in fact what happened. Mr. Woodrow Hay made the motion, someone else seconded it and then they had their votes. Um, just a fact. Um, second, I am on the board for the county TPA in which, as you mentioned, there is a, um, quorum required to be able to vote virtually, which I did and we had a quorum, so that is correct as well. Um, and then for the last, that was the last thing, that, those are just two items that I wanted to, to, but we should look into that just to make sure. Um, because I think when we did the interim city managers, we did the presentation and then we voted on who we wanted to move forward with that night. So I just wanted to confirm.
Correct. That, that would be the same process. You would essentially vote to move forward if that's what you all choose to do with the particular person. And then you also said that you wanted HR and, and the city attorney's office to begin the process of developing the contract to bring back to you, which you did to finally appoint that person in that role under the terms of whatever the agreement was. And that would need four votes. If you, if you move to go forward tonight with a person to go through that process, that would only need three votes.
Okay.
Because you would not be officially appointing them to the position.
Selecting one, selecting number one or number one candidate.
Correct.
Okay. And so the final act is really with the contract already in place or the draft contract?
And you all find.
Formatted in a resolution.
Right. And you all would have the final vote on whatever contract would come before you.
Comes back for us for discussion review. Yes, Vice Mayor?
So just to confirm, I'm just confused because during the interim phase, I thought it was a similar process and then the actual contract came back to the commission in, at a later date. So what is the process today that we're supposed to take?
Well, it's, it's essentially up to you all, but what my understanding was, uh, because you have someone in place in the interim position, that you are going to have that person that you all thought would be the person to move into the position permanently and come into an agreement with them and then bring that back and officially appoint them with the terms of their agreement and the terms of their employment and approve that process or prove that agreement because you've selected them to, to be the person. And then after that point, you would formalize that selection into a formal appointment under a contract.
All right.
Uh, uh, I'm, you, I'm.
Confused, to be honest with you. So just tell us what you do today, because I'm just, yeah.
Yes, of course, Commissioner Turkin.
Um, Commissioner, Commissioner Hay, I'm sorry, I can't be there. Um, fulfilling my commitment, uh, to military service, to train and defend your freedom.
I know what you're doing.
And the rest, and the rest of the people sitting in this room in our country. So I apologize, I can't be there. I would like to stick with my motion. Chief Stables unfortunately has submitted his resignation. And so from my understanding, based on the content of the last appointment, we can move forward.
And the, the answer to that is you, you can. But if you fail to come into, to terms on an agreement of the terms of the employment, then you would be in a position where you've appointed somebody as the city manager and they've not accepted the position in a formal contract. So you will be in a position where you're sitting here without a formal agreement and you would need four, four votes to then remove. and you would need four votes to then reverse the vote that you made tonight, if that's the direction you're going. So you have the authority under the ordinances of the city to do what you're saying. But at this point in time, there's no agreement set in place as to what the salary would be, just the general terms of employment. You have, you have, you do not have that right now.
So if I'm understanding correctly.
So that would be to direct City Attorney and HR to build that contract, correct?
That is correct. But in order to have a contract, both sides have to come into an agreement. So it's the logical.
So we'll do it the way we did it with the interim, which is take votes on who we would like the future City Manager to be and direct staff to make the contract. And then the contract would be then brought up at a future City Commission meeting for us to take a final vote. Is that correct?
That is correct. You can do it that way.
Let's move forward then.
And Mr. Morgan, what is the approximate expectation of how long that would take?
I can't give you a solid answer on that. All I can say is if a vote tonight is taken and approved of an individual, that we will work with HR beginning tomorrow in order to start that process.
All right, so we have a, if there's anything else, we have a motion. All right, I want to entertain all the discussion first before the motion. Go ahead.
I just want to make one last statement for the record. You know, we're going through this process. I think we got things right except the name. If Andrew Mack is going to be training this guy, why not make Andrew Mack the City Manager?
I would have had no problem with that. I actually encouraged Andrew Mack to apply, but I guess it was not your choice.
Well, we have not finalized this yet.
All right.
Okay.
It's very interesting how you finalized the ship back in 2012, and now you don't want to finalize the ship. I wonder whose direction you're getting.
This is 2022.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're not going to do the back and forth. Commissioner Turkin, you made a motion. I'm going to entertain that motion because you have the right to make a motion. I would like to ask that you make that motion to, is the appropriate term City Attorney rank said applicant as number one? Is that the best wording of the motion?
That's appropriate, and it would be something to the effect of ranking that person as the candidate to move forward with as the City Manager and bring back a resolution to appoint and to contract with that person for that role.
All right, Commissioner Turkin?
Yep. Before I start, I just want to say I saw that Robert Kunro is online. Thank you again for applying, and for showing your interest in the city. Chief Stables, again, sad to see you go. Thank you so much for your commitment and everything you've done. I do think that we have moved forward and we're in a better place than when you came in. So that being all said, you know, I would like to make the motion to appoint and direct, appoint Daniel Dugger and direct staff to enter contract negotiations for the City Manager position. Does that suffice?
I want to hear from the City Attorney if it suffices.
I just want to just, you're able to make the motion how you choose. I want to say that first off. But I would caution you to use the word appoint at this point in time because that would require, that would, number one, would require four votes.
What is the appropriate word to use?
It would be to select the individual as the candidate we wish to move forward with and direct staff to bring back an agreement and to a resolution to appoint that individual as the next City Manager of the city of Boynton Beach. That way, the staff and HR in our office will be able to sit down with the individual and come to an agreement that will be come back to you for final appointment and approval via resolution.
That was quite lengthy.
What he said.
Oh, good Lord.
Before you, I'm sorry, that was the lengthier version. The resolution would be to direct staff pursuant to the notice for tonight's meeting, which was to give direction, is to direct staff and the City Attorney's Office to negotiate or to enter into an agreement to bring back before you for final approval and appointment.
So I would like to make a motion to direct City Staff and Legal to enter in to the selected candidate of Dan, Captain Daniel Dugger, to enter in contract negotiations for the City Manager position. Does that suffice?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Turkin. Before us is a motion to select Captain Dan Dugger as a City Manager and to direct staff also to bring back that agreement.
Select him as the preferred.
As the preferred.
Candidate.
Preferred candidate. All right. We have a motion before us, and now we'll call for a vote.
And just for the record, that will require three votes, because you're not officially appointing him.
Understood. This is selecting the preferred candidate, as you said. Right, understood.
Selecting and ranking him number one.
Okay. One second. We have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Unreadiness.
We have a second here from Vice Mayor Cruz, and I guess there's additional discussion, so go ahead.
I would like to make an alternate motion. I would like to substitute Andrew Mack to be the next appointed City Manager.
Mr. Morgan?
Under Robert's rules, substitute motion would replace the original motion. There would need to be a second for the substitute motion.
All right, so do we have a second to that substitute motion made by Commissioner Hay? Hearing none, that motion dies for the lack of a second.
And I would ask that Commissioner Turkin, if he so chooses, reiterate or restate the motion so that it's back on the table for discussion and vote.
Yes, I would like to ask, or I'd like to make a motion for City Staff and Legal to enter negotiations with the selected preferred candidate, Captain Daniel Dugger. And stop me if I'm, you know, need to say something else. And enter negotiations to then come before us for final approval.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a second. All right, now for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no.
No.
The motion passes four to one with Commissioner Hay dissenting. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Cruz has requested to make a comment.
Last thing before we go. I want to thank Mr. Kunro for putting his name in the hat. He does have relevant experience, and hopefully one day, when he's able to come to our city, he will have opportunities with us. I think he would be a great fit in the future. I want to thank Mr. Stables for your time, for your dedication, your efforts, your character, you're the person that you are, and very sad to lose you. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Stables. Are there any other closing comments for my colleagues? Otherwise, this concludes our business for this evening. Any closing comments? Hearing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we have a second. Have a good night. Speeding is adjourned.